... yesterday from D.C. out to Lombard.
I know. That's why I stayed at the level.
Crazy.
Yes, I have a camera on for lunch. This should be very good. Yeah, I heard that. I've heard you book.
He's already given instructions to everybody.
Three down, Lombardi.
Scott, we have cameraman, right?
Yes.
Yes, this is smoking.
Okay, um. Scott, do you want to check and see if they're ready to go?
I was great. Paper, Jenna, off the seats.
It smells like burnt coffee or...
We have a new way to chat. Art suggested that you can call right into the room and see if you're ready to chat. It's a good idea. They're not going to tell Scott.
If they're, if they're going to answer.
Okay.
Well, we're going to do it next time. We still got a pre-plan.
I'd like to apologize to everyone for our lateness coming down here, but I, I'd like to ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll, please. Belkey?
Here.
Belzak?
Here.
Kenny?
Here.
Marquese?
Here.
MacIver?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Seifert?
Here.
Seven present. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature, and this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to speak to the council on any subject matter, not just items that are on the agenda this evening. So if anyone would like to address the council, please come forward to the microphone. Well, then we'll move right on to the approval of minutes of February 3rd, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Seifert, uh, excuse me, Shower, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Any additions or deletions? We didn't have a chance to review them beforehand, so does anyone have any additions or deletions for the minutes?
There was only one comment I had, which I don't know if I'm reading it wrong either, but it had to do with the, the first comment and a stance that the city, um, was, was, um, for the bus or the, um, the crossing guard. Can you look at that first paragraph? I'm...
The first, the first paragraph where?
The first speaker.
Luanne Spiros?
Yeah, I believe that was her.
Well, she, no, she was, she was commenting, applauding our staff for the, the rezonia of both camps.
No, the one about the cross, the crossing guard.
Oh, Barbara Finnegan?
Yeah, "to reconsider their stance on providing crossing guard service." So I didn't know if it should say "to reconsider their stance on not providing," because it was our stance, is not providing. So I didn't know if that should be flipped.
My interpretation is that she would like us to provide, that she'd like us to change our stance to provide, so that was my interpretation on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see much difference between how it's raised here. Any other additions or deletions for the clerk? Then the roll, please. Shower?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marquese?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
MacIver? Seifert?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstention.
The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. I know our, our, uh, Public Works Department is, is probably tired of getting all the compliments that they get, maybe.
We love a mayor.
I know, I know. Uh, Gloria Jiskra has emailed me, Florence Ducek has called me, uh, another resident stopped me at work today to tell me what a great job we do. Uh, it's, it, and I know the guys have got to be tired with, uh, the amount of, uh, work that they've been doing, uh, so, uh, we can't say enough, and thanks for all the work that they do. Anyone else? Alderman, Marquese?
Ju- just a comment, uh, and Dan already heard this, but, um, uh, I was getting my haircut at Daniel's Hair Care, and Dan recently moved into Darien from, uh, Rosehill.
From where?
From Rosehill.
Okay.
But he's always had the business in Darien. His sister-in-law came over and drove from Downers Grove to Darien to visit their new, uh, they're in the condos across the street from Our Lady of Peace, and she commented on how clean the streets were in Darien versus the streets in Downers Grove. And he said, "That's the way the streets always are in Darien." So that, a- again, is a compliment to, uh, to Mr. Gombek. And then Jim Sims, uh, Dan's also aware of this, uh, there's a pathway over there, and, uh, there were a number of people who asked if the city could assist in, in plowing that pathway, and Dan went over there and they took care of that, and Mr. Sims, uh, sent me an email saying how thankful they were for the cooperation and that the city's very fortunate to have Mr. Gombek.
Uh, I think Kathy Monarty initiated that request.
Correct.
Yeah, so, any other comments?
Mayor, I just wanted to add, um, we've gotten several emails, obviously a lot through the winter season, primarily for snow, but a, a lot of residents don't see the amount of main breaks that we've had. Public Works has been on, I think Dan said, forty-five or fifty main breaks this year, and obviously with the cold weather is, is wreaking havoc on, on a lot of municipal water systems, but the, the guys were out in the holes on the coldest of the coldest days, and, and, you know, you see water flowing down the street when it shouldn't, and they've been out, and again, have done also a great job with that, that's taken a, really a tremendous amount of time this winter season.
And one day we had four water main breaks on that coldest day, and as a matter of fact, Alderman Kenny came out and, uh, visited the one with the guys out there. There was a lot of water there, a lot. All, all equates to water loss unfortunately at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the bad part, the water loss. Other, other communications? Alderman, Kenny?
The only one I had is, uh, Janet Koldrovic, Seventeenth Thirty G.G. Lane. Was, uh, surprised our snow wasn't, you know, cleaned up in front of the street, and by the time I drove there, the street was clean, so, I mean, it's just... What can, what can, you know, people have complaints and it's, it's fixed, what can't tell you?
Okay, I'd like to share a communication that I've received, uh, from the, the DuPage County, uh, Division of Transportation. There will be a meeting Thursday, February twenty-seventh, at Ashton Place from four P.M. to seven P.M., and the purpose of the meeting is to, to go over the plan for the reconstruction of Seventy-Fifth Street and Plainfield Road and Cass Avenue. So, uh, we'll get that information out in every way possible, yes?
Madam Mayor, just so you know, DuPage County did, uh, provide letters or these notifications to residents, basically from Adams all the way up to McDonald's, uh, it was, uh, three hundred feet from the center line of Seventy-Fifth Street, that the residents and businesses were notified. I did check with a couple businesses, uh, at the Brookhaven specifically, and they were also notified, they were given the letters, uh, last Friday, uh, hand-delivered, so...
Great, yes.
We put out on direct connect also the, the notice of the meeting, but I think if it's their traditional meetings, Dan, it's, it's a, uh, from four to seven, more of an open house.
It is.
So it's not, a resident doesn't have to spend three hours there, they can go there and get their information.
That's correct. They'll have exhibit boards up and they'll have staff members there to answer any questions, so you are free to, uh, to, to come in, stay as long as you want, ask questions, and, and leave at, at your leisure. So, uh, it's an important, uh, important chance for anyone to take a look at what's planned and, uh, get your input. Any other communications? Then let's move on to the mayor's report, and, um, I get to do a fun thing this evening. Read a resolution honoring John F. Poteraski Jr. as our 2014 Citizen of the Year. Whereas John and Sharon Poteraski have been married for fifty-one years, and whereas John and Sharon moved to Darien in January of nineteen sixty-eight, and whereas John and Sharon have three children, Elizabeth, John, and James, and whereas John and Sharon have three grandchildren, Christopher, AKA Chris, Charles IV., AKA CJ, and Brooke, and whereas John F. Poteraski Jr. was instrumental in the December thirteenth, nineteen sixty-nine incorporation of the city of Darien and could be considered one of Darien's founding fathers, and whereas John Poteraski started Cub Scout Pack Two Thirty-Six at L.A. School in nineteen seventy-two and was leader for over three years with fifty young boys under his guidance, and whereas John Poteraski served as a group leader for the Girl Scouts, and whereas over a ten-year period, John Poteraski served as president, vice-president, treasurer, and facilities director of the Darien Youth Club, and whereas John Poteraski coached baseball, baseball for twelve years and basketball for three years, and whereas knowing the importance of education, John Poteraski explored the consolidation of District Sixty-One and Sixty-Three into one school district, and whereas John Poteraski was instrumental in structuring the formation of the District Sixty-One Educational Foundation, and whereas John Poteraski was a member of the Breakfast Kiwanis Club for the, for three years, serving as president for one year, and whereas John Pa- Poteraski served as an auxiliary policeman from nineteen ninety-five to nineteen ninety-seven, and whereas John Poteraski was a member of the city's zoning committee from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and three, and whereas John Poteraski was a committee member of Save the Barn, and where, whereas with pending construction of Seventy-Fifth Street, John Poteraski assisted the Brookhaven Merchants Association in a meeting with DuPage County Highway officials to help orchestrate and negotiate an additional entrance access off Cass Avenue into the shopping st- center that was originally not in the, in the county's plan, and whereas John Poteraski has touched most everyone in Darien through his generosity of service and commitment, and whereas John Poteraski became a member of the Darien Historical Society in nineteen ninety-seven, served as director for many years, and is presently the president, and whereas John Poteraski and his family have been diligent as collectors for the Darien Historical Society's annual fundraiser, and whereas John alone focused on gathering information and materials from the Darien Youth Club to include in the archives of the Historical Society, and whereas as president of the Darien Historical Society, John conducts meetings with tolerance and professionalism, and whereas in two thousand and two, current Mayor Carmen Soldado appointed John Poteraski to the position of Ward Three Alderman, a position he has held, he held honorably until his retirement in May of two thousand and thirteen, and whereas as alderman, John went above and beyond in service to his ward constituents, constituents by tirelessly, tirelessly, seeking reliable electric service, addressing speeding issues in the neighborhoods, and initiating the subsidized taxi service for Darien's senior citizens, and whereas through the insistence of John, the city conducted a special census after the two thousand U.S. census, which brought the city increased revenues due to Darien residents that were missed in the original count, and whereas chairman of the Administrative Finance Committee, John Poteraski questioned every dollar to be sure there was no waste and that all dollars were spent serving Darien residents, and whereas John Poteraski has always been able to identify the central issues of any challenge and be reliable in the completion of tackled tasks, and whereas during his tenure on the city council, one of John's greatest wishes was to be able to reduce the city tax to the residents, and the city was able to accomplish that in both two thousand and twelve and thirteen, and whereas a nominator stated "a shining star," no, John is a galaxy, and whereas John F. Poteraski will forever shine brightly throughout the city of Darien, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Darien, that John Poteraski Jr. be designated as our two thousand and fourteen Citizen of the Year for the city of Darien in recognition of his many years of dedicated service to the city of Darien and its residents. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Kenny. The roll, please.
Seifert?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Marquese?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Weaver?
Aye.
Regona?
Aye.
Corin?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Vanna?
Yes.
Twelve ayes, unanimous.
Thank you very much. I don't know who that guy is, but they, they sent me here.
Well, you know, John, after, after your, your comments, then we have to give you this resolution, but you're going to have to give it back to us because we have to present it to you again, uh, at the Citizen of the Year Dinner Dance, so...
First of all, it's going to be short, so you can realize if you're thinking you have to go to the washroom, you can wait two or three minutes.
John, get into the mic, we all want to hear, they want to hear you at home.
It's not doing anything. Oh, yeah, it is. Okay. First of all, I, I want to thank my audience for coming, because a lot of people with a lot of memories with I, and I'm very, very, very happy that they came. Warm my stomach. But being the Citizen of the Year is an honor I really take seriously. I, I couldn't believe it when they came, I, I thought they had the wrong house. And I, and, you know, you listen to all those different things I was involved in, and they, they're all legitimate things, but, but I had helpers, I had a lot of support, a lot of people, I was able to do that. And we were able to do projects, but there's one particular helper, my wife Sharon. You can't clap, you can't clap loud enough for her, because there were times when I was up in Skokie and I had a baseball game in thirty-five minutes, and she dragged the field, dragging those baseball bats into the, and there's a lot of stories, and she worked Tag Day and all kinds of things, and I appreciate that you acknowledge it, which you're saying, say, "Thank you." And to the residents of Darien, I also say letting me serve with them. I never expected to be a Citizen of the Year, and I think that's true of most of them. Most of them just did the job they got at that time. You know, first they did this, and next they did the next thing, and little by little, somebody makes the list, and, and that's the way it came, it was really a surprise. And I want to thank you for letting me be with you for a number of years. It's a warm feeling, and I say thank you for the hardy honor, thank you all.
John, come on up here. I think Carol, Carol's going to take a picture, and Sharon's going to take a picture. Let's do this, let's do this right, Jim.
Aye.
Okay, hold on, there you go.
Can we get one of my wife?
Come on up, Sharon, come on up.
Careful, Jim.
For Sharon, give me your camera.
We think the vote, give it to Sharon.
Do I press?
Sharon, okay. We'll look at Scott first, if we can, Sharon. Let's look at Scott first.
Okay, look at Scott.
One, two, three.
Scott. Yep.
Okay, then let's look at Carol, next. Hold on, Kenny.
Hold on, Kenny.
I see that on the neck of her, Kenny.
Ready?
We're ready. Clap, clean my sideboard.
Clean my, wow. Clean my sideboard.
On the budget.
He can answer that now.
On the budget.
We know him.
Okay, I, I think we're gonna, I, we're gonna, we have a short agenda, oh, gosh, I, I get myself in trouble when I say that, but, uh, we have a short agenda this evening, so let's go through it, because I know the committee that, uh, for the Citizen of the Year have, uh, have a wonderful cake and ca- coffee reception outside for us, and I'd like to acknowledge all those members of the committee, Bonna Cussera, who's the chairman, and I think we have all the members, Carol Mallers is here, I see Linda Zeman, Carrie Gansey, and Barb Boyer is here. I thank you all for your service, and I know the work is, there still is work ahead, so thank you for all that you, that you've done. So, let's move on, we'll try to move as quickly as possible through our agenda. Uh, let's go to the clerks' report.
No report.
That's great, how about administrator?
No report.
No report, okay, department head information. No reports, that's great, okay. And, uh, let's go to the treasurer's report, please.
Nice try.
All right, this evening I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number thirteen, fourteen, nineteen, in the amount of five hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-one cents from listed funds, payroll for the period ended February sixth, two hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred twenty dollars and one cent, for a total be approved of eight hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-two cents.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Shower?
I got a discussion, we had, we didn't have workshop.
That's right, go ahead.
Um, Irma, you know, we have an Irma, um, amount, fuel tank insurance, monthly deductible for thirty-four, forty-six, thirty-five, is that because of that cleanup mess that we had with the, with the bad gas?
No, we have a separate insurance policy with Irma, they go out to bid along with about thirty or so other municipalities, and we all get specific underground storage and above-ground storage tank insurance, um, other municipalities that don't have those don't pay for them, so we pay for that separately than our...
In the event of there's a leak, we have insurance coverage for the cleanup.
So then, did that insurance cover that, uh, fuel mix-up that we had there back in the end of December?
No, that's, our general liability insurance would cover that, if the, if the other company went out of business, or if we had to sue them, our insurance company would cover that under general liability. This is specifically environmental insurance, so for the cost of like cleaning up the soils, if there were leaks or something like that, um, that's where this insurance policy would come into.
It was a big number, and Mr. Poteraski's in the audience, so I had pressure to ask a question, I apologize.
Okay, Alderman Seifert?
Just a question, I saw there was a recording fee for an N.F.R. for the dry cleaner, so we did get the N.F.R. for the dry cleaner.
Yes, yes.
Did we also get the N.F.R. for the B.P.M.A.C.O.?
It's been, uh, recorded, we're waiting for the final copy to come via mail.
Okay, so that actually went quicker than, than you anticipated.
Yes, we were still, we were staying on them, uh, on a weekly basis.
So the dry cleaner was in our possession to record, but AMACO recorded the one for that, their whole property?
Right.
So that's, that's good news, both properties are free and clear now of environmental issues. Any other questions for... Is this right, Sharon? Then the roll, please.
Seifert?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marquese?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The, the warrant has been approved, uh, do you want to go over the monthly report?
Revenue and expenditure report for the period ended January thirty-first reflects a general fund year-to-date revenue of ten million, six hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars, expenditures of eight million, five hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars, for a current balance of three million, sixty-seven thousand, sixty-five dollars. Water fund year-to-date revenue, three million, nine hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars, expenditures, four million, one hundred eighty-one thousand, seventy-seven dollars, for a current balance, six hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred two dollars. Motor fuel tax, fund year-to-date revenue, five hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars, expenditures, four hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars, current balance, three hundred fifty-four thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars. Water depreciation, fund year-to-date revenue, sixty-two thousand, six hundred eighty dollars, expenditures, one hundred thirty thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, current balance, six hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars. Capital improvement, fund year-to-date revenue, four million, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars, expenditures, two million, nine hundred forty-six thousand, fifty-three dollars, current balance, five million, four thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars. Capital projects, debt service, fund year-to-date revenue, five hundred four thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars, expenditures, four hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars, current balance, thirteen thousand, three hundred eighty-two dollars.
Any questions on the revenue and expenditure report? Alderman, Kenny?
With all the water main breaks we've had, how was that going to affect us on the water, on the water fund? Because obviously you're losing, you're losing water and we're getting built in a city of Chicago for that, how's that coming into play?
That's where we're, uh, it will come into play, uh, actually the way it's really, uh, we do it on a monthly basis from a staff's perspective. We also have a yearly report that runs from September through October, which is referred to as the LMO. That LMO basically incorporates how much water we've taken in, what we've billed out, what the remainder is, becomes a loss. Obviously that loss is calculated from unknown leaks, such as water mains that are older than, uh, a certain age, uh, water main breaks that do occur and are recorded, um, once we take those two out, and if there's additional water loss, then we need to be very aggressive on, uh, um, water leak surveys. We have a water leak survey coming up in two months, and, uh, right now, as of December, we've been watching our water pumpage, for some unknown reason, our water pumpage has gone up, uh, since December. We cannot find any additional leaks, obviously there's about eighteen to twenty-four inches of frost in the ground, so if there's a leak out there, number one, it hasn't surfaced yet, and/or it's running in the stone, um, obviously four, five, four to five feet on the ground into a storm sewer that we have not identified yet.
Or, Dan, the other option is residents are using more, but we've kind of ruled that out with, when we recently talked to DuPage County, because our billing came in, so you would hope to see some corresponding, um, relationship of the numbers, but we didn't see in this last period.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Treasurer Corin, let's move on to the next item, standing committee reports. Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, our first admin finance committee of the whole budget meeting will be tomorrow at six-thirty P.M. in the council chambers, and going forward, they will be held every Tuesday at six-thirty P.M. until completed, and for the record, John, I got some big shoes to fill, buddy, so, just want to let you know right now, I miss you. Anyway, um, thank you, I appreciate it. I appreciate that, thank you. Our next admin finance meeting will be held Monday, March third, at six P.M. in our upstairs meeting room.
Alderman, Marquese?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just a reminder, the next Municipal Services Committee meeting will be next Monday night, February twenty-fourth, at six-thirty, here in the council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman, MacIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, our next meeting of the police committee will be on Monday, March seventeenth, at six P.M. We are changing locations, we will, uh, going forward, we, we will be meeting in the police training room, um, because we found that, uh, we're going to be doing kind of a, um, kind of a site tour of, um, various areas within the police department, um, during those meetings.
Good idea. It makes sense for the police committee to meet over at the police department. Okay, uh, let's move to the next item, which is questions and comments, agenda-related. Do any of the, uh, res, any of the aldermen, since we didn't have a chance to have a work session, do any of the aldermen have any, uh, discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda? Alderman, MacIver?
Madam Mayor, we, um, the police committee met on the new business item, number seventeen, and, uh, there was a consensus to support this, uh, purchase of this crime mapping software.
Very good, thank you. Any other, anyone else on the council have any questions on any of the items on the agenda, consent or new business?
Since you brought up the, um, the new business item, you know, I, I want to talk a little bit, and this will happen tomorrow at the budget, but, um, we have some seizure money, I understand, and there's some, there's a lot of money, you know, that, uh, we've gotten from seizures, so I wanted to understand a little bit more of what the control is, that we have to spend that, you know, what parameters.
You want that tomorrow, Alderman, at the budget meeting?
Yeah, we'll probably do that tomorrow, but this is one item that nicely falls into that, since it was an unbudgeted item.
Okay, very good. Any other? Okay, I'd like to open it up to the floor, is anyone in the audience want to address any of the items on our agenda this evening? Then let's move right on to old business, and there being no old business, let's move right to the consent agenda, and for the benefit of the viewing audience and those in the audience here, I'd like to men, uh, read the three items that are on the consent agenda. The first item is a motion granting a waiver of the fifty-dollar-a-day fee for Class J temporary liquor license for Our Lady of Peace Home and School Association, they'll be running an event soon. Uh, item V, B, is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and treasurer to sign a modification and an extension agreement to keep open a line of credit with Republic Bank, and I don't think we've touched it yet, have we? No, we haven't, but we need to re, re, uh, reauthorize it. Uh, the item C is a motion to approve the release of executive minutes that no longer require confidentiality. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman, MacIver? Seconded by Alderman Seifert? The roll, please.
MacIver?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marquese?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All items have been approved. Uh, item, uh, item A on our new business is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing authorizing the city administrator to purchase crime mapping software from public engines in an amount, uh, of five thousand five hundred eighteen dollars and twenty cents. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman MacIver, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Discussion. The roll, please.
MacIver.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Marquise.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All, uh, this item has been approved. Now we move to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. First, we'll start with the, uh, the council. Do any of the aldermen have announcements? Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, a week from today, Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, the Darien Lions will be sponsoring a blood drive at Lays School between four thirty and eight P.M.
Thank you.
Bring your blood.
Bring your blood, okay. Alderman Belkey?
Yeah, we don't have to get into this tonight, but the, I know that the Darien Historical Society meeting happened, and I know that there was a question about a lease that was brought up. Was that, did that lease get shown and do we understand?
Uh, yes, I have a copy of it, and, uh, I don't know if we shared it with the, the Initiatives Committee yet. But I, we've, we've all, the staff has taken a look. I asked for it. And did we send it over to the Historical Society yet?
Um, I don't recall sending it.
Oh, we had, we had, we had some, we had some, I know, but we did, we had records of our own too. Yeah, so we looked at that, and the, the gist of the matter is that, you know, there, if, it's a ten-year agreement, and if, uh, if no action is taken, it just renews for another ten years. But there's an out. Uh, after, we have sixty days to, to, uh, to notify that we, we do not, uh, want to continue on in this relationship and be able to get out of that.
Uh, there's two, uh, maybe you cover this, Mayor, but there's two separate leases. One between, uh, the school district and us, and one between us and the Historical Society. So I don't know if that was brought up.
Right, so I wanted to, 'cause I watched it.
Okay.
How many of you, I guess all of you would like to take a look at that lease agreement, yet, you know, if, if, why don't we send that out to the council members?
Sure, we'll be talking about it tomorrow, or at least it's part of the budget.
Yeah, somewhere along, along, along the lines, okay. Okay, if there's anyone in the audience wanted to address the city council on any items? Alderman Potera- uh, excuse me, there I go. I, I guess, you know, it's just like the president retires, he's always called the president, so. Uh, John, pardon me? Alderman Belkey, do you want to give the, uh, the details about, uh, the Citizen of the Year Dinner Dance?
Sure. There, we are accepting the application. There's, um, thirty dollars for the, for the event, and that's March eighth. And, um, I believe the city has the forms to fill out, or you can go online. Is that right, Scott?
Right.
Right, 'cause I just filled out mine today. So, uh, it starts at six o'clock. And chicken or roast loin, I think, was the choice.
Chicken marsala and pork roast loin, right.
Chicken marsala, yeah.
So tickets are, yeah.
Alpine banquet.
Tickets are available through City Hall, yes.
Twenty-eighth of February, correct? Is that the deadline on that? Purchased tickets yesterday.
Uh, well, it, it, we set a deadline, but it's always loose. So, yeah. So, uh, okay, if there's no one in the audience that wanted to address the council, then I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman MacIver, seconded by Alderman Belkey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let's adjourn to cake and coffee for John.